Thank you. I'd like to call this regular council of the committee of the whole meeting back into session at five twenty zero. We're going to move on to reports from administration. The first one is five point one. Town of Hinton signage standards manual and follow up page twenty of your agenda. Administration?
Thank you, and through the chair to the rest of committee. Good evening. This report returns the matter of selection of a standard for signposts to committee in order to finalize the updates of the two thousand and eleven town of Hinton signage standards manual. The current manual is attached to this report at page thirty four of your agenda tonight. And this was, as you recall, missing in my last meeting, so glad that CEO can ask if remember to put it on. Also attached at page twenty two of your agenda is a slide deck of a presentation by Urban Systems on the costing details that committee requested on the post alternative, it's black outline specifically peeled log, painted steel pipe and fiber cast concrete would look alike. And I'll just mention one, one thing about the manual attached to your agenda is that it doesn't have any of the updates that are already approved for the manual in it yet. This is the exact standards manual that is online. I'll just remind you that some of the updates are the black metal silhouettes that we've added as the banners and the Happy Creek signage family, which has been converted to a new interpretive sign family. I'll turn this over to Lee Giddens of Urban Systems for her presentation, but I'd like to, when we do come back to meeting after these presentation and any questions that you may have, we do want to talk about maintenance and replacement program for the current signs inventory. Thank you. Thanks, Lee. Get away.
Thanks, Deb. Again, thank you, everyone, for having me join again tonight. We've done some work, as Deb mentioned, and we're excited to share that work with you. So I'll just share my screen here. Can everyone see the screen? Okay. Okay, so as discussed last time, there are a few key elements that we wanted to dive into a bit further. I'm just going to skip this slide. It's a remnant from the past and it still applies, but where we are today is again, giving an overview of the existing sign family to elaborate on what it is exactly we're looking at, either replacing or continuing on in terms of the peeled log element. A comparison of cost and we did our best to break it down to a log or a pole by pole basis or a single unit. However, that posed challenging for one of them, which we'll get into a little bit later on. Maintenance considerations as well as cost and maintenance schedule considerations. And then finally wanted to wrap up with a recommendation on how to proceed. So just an overview of the sign family. Within the manual as it stands today, we've got six sign types that apply and currently have the peeled round log as part of the design. There's within those six signs, there's ten pole variations. So those are different specifications related to length, diameter or taper, so that it fits into the relevant base plate and anchorage design. The next couple of slides just overview what what the current design looks like in plan and then how it has been implemented in in the community. So we've got highway corridor, the corridor, neighborhood district signs. And then we also have park directional and in a multiple sense and directional in a singular sense. And so backing up to those previous different options that we had presented last time we met, we're now down to three options instead of four. We had parked the aluminum product, and so we're moving forward with analysis of the peeled log, the fiber cement and the painted steel pipe post and their relevant applications. So back to the the further analysis of costs for supply, install and assembly on a pole by pole basis, as well as the maintenance considerations through annual cost and schedule. The first option here, the peeled log, our existing product, it comes in at a range of seven hundred to eleven hundred per unit. And ultimately, it the variance is based on those specifications that I outlined before. So some are longer than others. Some warrant different diameters and that sort of thing. From a maintenance cost perspective, this warrants in in true to form what we've laid out in the manual. Kind of the provision of two seasonal staff in order to make reparations, sand things down, restain that type of thing and turn over a portion of the signs every year so that they're back up to working order. And so within that, we've kind of outlined what that maintenance schedule consists of. We're recoding these poles with a stain essentially to enhance their lifespan and reduce any wear and tear from weathering is is the sentiment here. Back to constructibility considerations and initial parameters that were set out in the project. So we're looking at where the supply is coming from. And this particular option is the most local. So it's regional and it's usually coming from the Hinton area kind of within the Edmonton, greater Edmonton area is where we're we're seeing the sources of the product and the labor. And from a lead time perspective, to acquire new signage material, we are seeing longer lead times because there is a relatively specialized process in order to strip the logs and then get them to the diameters we want to be working with and then refine the surface treatments. Our next option here is the fiber cement. So this is where we ran into a little bit of a challenge with the cost on a per unit basis. And apologies, I'm just gonna meet myself for a second while I take a little sip of water. Some of the constructibility considerations for this option are related to the fact that this needs to be formed. And so where our efficiency comes into play is when we can reduce the amount of forms we have. So back to that original statement of we have ten different pole varieties based on the specifications related to each of the six sign types. In an ideal world, you would have ten forms to supply each of those pole requirements. But this would warrant the need or thought of reducing how many forms it would take. So standardizing the pole dimensions and specifications to have a better economy at scale per order. And so in working with the supplier initially, they were not willing to give us a per unit cost, but instead kind of a an order cost that would use the assumptions of if we were looking at two form maximum. And then also kind of how that rolls out over the 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 replacement of our current signs that are existing in place. So we used around fifty signs from what is currently in place today to make those assumptions and and draw out this estimate. So when we are looking at how this kind of comes into play apples to apples to the other options, we are seeing that this is relatively higher for the upfront cost. But when we talk about maintenance, that's when we get into some of the return on investments. And we're seeing, you know, from an annual perspective, we're not seeing the need to to bring these poles up to a different working standard like we're seeing in the peeled log. However, this upfront cost is significant and it would take several more years in order to pay it off comparatively to these the log poles. Our third option is the painted steel pipe post. So on a unit basis, we are looking at a range of five to six thousand, depending on the height and the hardware that would need to be installed in order to receive this option. From a maintenance perspective, on an annual basis, just for touch up paints, dent repair, anything of that nature, we're assuming a pretty low cost of twenty five to twenty five hundred to three grand on an ongoing basis. And the lifespan is roughly twenty years from a powder coated perspective, which is what we would recommend from the onset with just minor repairs kind of moving forward beyond that. It could lead to a much longer lifespan. So some of the constructibility considerations for this particular option is that we're again, this is more of a regional supply and fairly low from like a skill level or labor perspective, there's low risk because it is fairly approachable. But from an aesthetic perspective, it's not meeting the requirements that were laid out from the initial design, and that's posing some of our our concerns with this option. Again, from the the cost is considered to be kind of in a midrange between the the two other products that were analyzed. But we can get into that a little bit more on the next slide. Oh, and also wanted to highlight too that with this particular option, tapering is not feasible from a cost benefit perspective. And so that would warrant the update and redesign of the structural elements of the signage, so the the base plates and the anchorage assemblies that are already designed for the system. So this is our matrix comparing the three options. In addition to what you saw in our last meeting, the cost has been kind of re repositioned and redefined. So looking at the peeled log, we're in the in the lowest bracket there. Moderate to more of the high level is that fiber cement option and then moderate falling right in the middle is our is our painted steel pipe post. From a maintenance perspective, our peeled log is the highest. And it would require the most attention with restaining every three to four years on that ongoing cycle, breaking it up with seasonal maintenance. Fiber cement and the painted steel pipe post also offer like minimal maintenance ongoing for the foreseeable kind of lifespan of each product. And the recommendation at this point in analyzing all of the different products is that the peeled log is recommended as the continued preferred product overall to meet the parameters set out by the project as well as what we saw kind of in this additional analysis we just undertook. Whereas the painted steel post, as discussed in our last meeting, it does warrant some further attention and maybe acceptable in alternative or in alternate conditions with preapproval by the town administration. And that's really just to ensure that where these are going is appropriate based on the level of visibility that we're not using these kind of in a wholesale manner, but in areas that make the most sense. So these could be places that are difficult to access or require kind of extraordinary measures to perform the frequent maintenance that's required to keep the signage family in good working order. And then also where a sign might be in place temporarily. So we gave that a clause of less than ten years. And we might see that in places where there's something that is in flux or under development in a phased way. And it might warrant kind of a an overarching signage update at its at its final point, but in the interim, there might be opportunities to implement signage along the way to provide clarity to residents and visitors. So this is this is where we landed, but very open to receiving any questions and and feedback.
Thank you very much. I do have questions from council. Councilor McGee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, my question comes on that very last point, and it's the last recommendation in the report. It says where a sign may be in place temporarily, less than ten years. Permitting the the painted steel post, I certainly agree that the painted steel post might be appropriate in certain areas. But that last section on the timeline, I'm a little confused about because when I look at the cost of the peeled log, putting it down to seven hundred dollars to eleven hundred dollars, compared to the painted steel post, which runs approximately five thousand to six thousand dollars. For myself, if the issue is, you know, it's not going to be there permanently, why would we put that more expensive painted steel post in place? That was the only thing that I guess it it didn't sort of line up for.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'm sorry, through the chair to committee. Thank you for the question. I I think where this was coming from was that there's a sentiment that these steel pipe posts could be reused and reallocated. So it'd be more of like a simpler installation and really just used as like a temporary measure. So it could be something that's stockpiled and then reused for other purposes as and when the need arises. So that's a great clarification. Thank you for that.
Sure. Anything else from council? Let's go this through call passes.
Thank you, and through the chair to the rest of committee. Thank you so much, Lee, for taking us through that and explaining it so thoroughly. So administration is making the recommendation tonight that committee reached consensus to refer the signage standards manual update to a future meeting of council, including peeled log as a signpost standard and painted steel pipe as an alternative for hard to maintain or remote signs. And there's a few alternatives there for you as well, but I'll just go on to the emergent issue that came to light as we were looking for costing information from contractors. We had a look at signage inventory and the post inventory in particular. And what we found was that a number of the painted, sorry, the peeled logs at the moment are deteriorated to the point where they need replacement. And some are salvageable if maybe it is applied as promptly as possible. So the second recommendation that we're making tonight is that council direct administration to return a capital project and or an operational project to council for consideration in the twenty twenty five budget cycle with a proposal to replace and or may start maintaining and log posts until such times we have restored the inventory to its expected service level. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Good. Thank you very much, Councilor McGee.
Yeah, with the recommended action, the second, so the first action. The second part of that statement is including peeled log, oh, sorry, and and painted steel pipe as an alternative for hard to maintain or remote signs. What I don't see capturing, and I just want to be clear, I don't see that ten year timeline indicated in that recommended action. So would that ten year timeline be captured as part of that motion or is that not part of that particular motion? It's simply part of the report.
So through the chair to the rest of committee, apologies, the ten year timeline was a later addition to the presentation tonight. So it's not included in this particular wording of this particular resolution. We can, if if committee is hoping to specify times and places where the painted steel pipe might be used, to be clear in the manual for developers and for administrations to implement, we can add that in certainly. And we can bring that fully fleshed out resolution to you in the council report.
Madam Chair, if I may, for myself, this is one of those areas where I I don't want to get too far into the weeds, you know, in the case of, you know, I think if administration knows that they have a stockpile of painted steel posts and there's a temporary location where they think one will work best, that's fine for me. Like, I don't need to worry myself about how many are, you know, going in where and for how long. The concern I would have is if time becomes a driving factor of, okay, well, we are going to purchase painted steel posts for all of our temporaries at five thousand bucks a pop. That's when I start to get a little bit concerned about the specifics of how admin might might look at that. So I think I'm comfortable with recommended action, but if admin could speak to that a little bit and offer any comfort, that would be helpful for me.
Through the chair, if I could. You know, at least in our conversation, we talked about the steel pipe being kind of that alternative where wood just doesn't work. You can't get in there, whatever the case is, but maybe for temporary for, you know, events, it could be a variety of different reasons, but anything coming forward, I don't think there should be any worry about this or any other administration going on because that would be a part of the budget process when you do bring it forward for signs. And because this is, we have a fairly fairly sound budget, this would be something that if we were to buy, you know, a stockpile of steel posts, we would we would be very fed forward. At this point in time, there is no, I don't think there's much of an appetite to do that. It's just, you know, if we come across a situation where wood doesn't really work, you know, that would be an alternative we could present, but you know, I think that would be part of the the budget process.
I'm good, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I just have to ask administration or the presenter, what makes a post, a steel post worth between five and six thousand dollars?
So I can respond to that. Thank you through the chair to the rest of committee. We had a bit of a time crunch when it came to costing for the this presentation and initial costing for peeled log was somewhat skewed. And it was clarified through further investigation. So although we are presenting that as the facts that was was given to us from suppliers, we would certainly take a closer look at that. I find it surprising as well, but that's about all I can I can offer tonight.
Council, any more discussion on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take the recommended first action that committee reached consensus to refer the signage standards manual update to a future meeting of council, including peeled logs as the signpost standard and painted steel pipe as an alternative for hard to maintain or remote signs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, we do have a a direction on the floor for discussion. I'm not seeing anything. Before I call the question, any discussion from council? And nothing. The committee reached consensus to refer the signage standards manual updating to a future reading of council, including peeled logs as the signpost standard and painted steel pipe as an alternate alternative for hard to maintain or remote signs. Please hold now. And that's Karen. Thank you. Council, any more discussion on this before we move on to our next? Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the second part of the recommended actions. That committee reached consensus that administration develops a post maintenance operational project and a post replacement capital project for council's consideration during the twenty twenty five budget deliberation cycle.
Would you like to speak as well, sir?
No, I I think that's pretty straightforward as part of what we need to do to take care of our our infrastructure.
Thank you. Council, we have another direction on the floor. Would Council like to discuss this? And Council, please.
Just to the chair to administration, I guess the question is, is there any, if there's any critical signpost at this time, is that something that you guys are able to deal with within existing twenty twenty four budget or do we need to look at that separately?
Through administration to the, sorry, with through the chair to the rest of committee. In the case of anything that's dangerous, as was the case with Greensboro sign, which had deteriorated to quite a instability point, we removed it and we would do that with any other signage and then simply plan to replace them. And other than that, there is some small amount of budget that we could apply to key areas, especially if there was a particular sign that was an application of maintenance that we can.
But nothing is to be in this motion at this time to enable you to continue work in twenty twenty four?
No, we think that we can do it through the twenty twenty five operational budget and capital budget.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, we're talking about the signs, but I'm wondering, is this also going to include, say, in front of the library where we've already removed some of that, which isn't structural, of course, but is it the plan of administration to also bring back with this operational budget project and the replacements to include those those areas or is that going to be separate?
Wow.
Sure. Through the chair, for the twenty twenty five process, we would look at all the logs, you know, and we're probably prioritizing this just based on the, but you know, all the logs would be created. That's O B C or C P P and or however we bring it forward. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Council, anything more on this? Jen, keep with the section up. And I will call the question that committee reached consensus that administration develop develops a post maintenance operational project and a post replacement capital project for council's consideration during the twenty twenty five budget deliberation cycle. Council, it's hold now. And that is Karen. Council, is there anything else on this report before we move on? I'm seeing nothing. We will move on. Five point two waterline realignment request. And we can talk about that one. And that's take seventy seven in your agenda.
Through the chair to all of committee, I'll take you through my report here. We've had a request from the landowner to lower one of the town's water lines. We had a easement on the on the property that was put onto the property when the water line was installed sometime around nineteen ninety one. And it is in the way of the leveling of the site that they're they're they are doing. They're looking for approximately two hundred and four hundred, two hundred and four thousand as the town's contribution towards doing such a project. The site does have other hurdle hurdles that I've outlined in my report that make it a very difficult site for for development. So council will need to basically weigh the benefits of contributing to this request compared to the, you know, removing the barrier to development to help create, develop all the lands in the town. I'm looking to take in any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a direction, please.
Certainly, sir.
And I just want to make sure I need one word before I make it. I will send Jen a copy. Sorry, Jen, I'm just going to send it to you now. So I'll read it while Jen's getting it. I'd like to seek consensus that committee direct administration to return our report to a regular meeting of council that aligns with the requests made by the land partner. And then if we can speak to it, please.
Please do.
I, as much as I can, some of those, because it's a land issue, of course, some of those details are made in camera and they can't be spoken to. So again, if administration has, if if they could weigh in on whether or not that accurately captures the intent, if that is the will of council in a way that they can bring bring that back to a future regular meeting of council. Thanks.
Thank you.
Through the chair to members of council, I I think that would be sufficient. Through the chair to uh members of council, I I think that would be sufficient. Um, you know, we did if. You know, we do have some alternative wording for council to consider or council or the moon that would be. In alignment with uh what I think the intent is, it is a little bit more specific on uh. On what in the ass that would be public information, especially if we're bringing that forward to council, so. Um, we do have some alternative wording if you'd like to consider that, but I think that generally that would. That would provide us enough uh to go off of, um I believe the alternative wording that we came up with would just. Allow administration to bring back a negotiated agreement or a more fleshed out agreement prior to returning to council. I think that would be the main difference.
And Madam Chair, if I may, um. If I sort of ask administration, I'm okay with that, uh would it be appropriate for that additional wording? To be included as some of the optional considerations for council within that? Uh, that request for decision? I mean, certainly for myself making the motion, I'm okay with that.
Yep.
I think it gives council some consideration. Just wondering if that would would all tie together?
And through the through the chair, I can just. And again, if this is uh, if this aligns with what our intent is, but council seek uh. Council seek consensus for administration to bring waterline realignment request East Ridge Village. Item to a regular council meeting with the recommendation that council negotiate an agreement. With the current landowner of two hundred printed way to provide a two hundred thousand financial commitment letter. To the cost of lowering the water line subject to the town providing the payment at the time of the development proceeding to construction. So it is a little bit more specific if we did want to uh uh have those in there, but based on what. Uh. Based on what we heard, I think that would be uh for consideration as well, that that. That auction was not considered at the time that the request came in, but. That is something council would like to consider. Go ahead, sure.
Actually, I guess is a follow up question. Does that, and I apologize for the simplicity, um does that align? Uh with the request that was received? Or does that vary from the request that was received? Through the chair, that was our understanding of what your request was. Madam Chair, if that's the case, then I'm okay with that. That is clarification.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Taylor.
Well, cases, the money would come from offsite levies. One, the offsite levies comes later, and that's not what the partner preferred. The other, the offsite levy levies come sooner, closer to development. And that's what the partner preferred. So your wording uh covers that scenario that they prefer to. As opposed to option one right here, which is where it comes later.
My answer.
Through the chair, members of council, yeah, I think we're. Talking the same thing. I I think we're talking, it's very close. It's either at the time of proceeding to construction. E- either we're paying a cash contribution and then uh they are paying the full offsite levies. Um. Or they are proceeding with construction and we are taking that off of onsite, like if that was the option, so. It would be relatively close, but I think this would be a direct cash contribution. Uh, at the time that they're proceeding to construction. So earlier.
Okay, good, yes. Perfect, yep.
Counselor Travers. Counselor Haas.
So I I guess for clarification, we have a motion. However, I'm making it sounded like maybe it's not as detailed as the one CEO Panasek is, so I'm curious, what motion are we dealing with here?
Counselor. We go.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm with the information admins provided. I'm happy to withdraw my motion so that we can. I think the intent is, at least for myself, is to go with that recommendation provided it aligns. So I'm I'm happy to seek uh permission to withdraw my my consensus on the paper.
Cause I I just want to see what um Counselor Stashik does receive. Go ahead.
I don't.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I related.
That's a different topic.
It's unrelated, counsel and the group's request.
Okay, so you want to um to withdraw?
Correct.
Uh, do we need a vote on uh to withdraw? So, John, Counselor, um, what do you want to request to? May correct administration to return, no, and that is the um. Okay, here we go. Counselor McGee has um requested committee direct administration to return report to a regular meeting of council that aligns with the request. By the law, partner, and he is requesting to withdraw his um direction. Please hold now. And that is Karen. And counsel.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward consensus uh as indicated by the C A O in terms of wording, please. Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Keeler.
Administration, what does um payment at time of development proceeding mean to you?
When they get the development uh uh plan or first, that's what they were talking about. That's what they thought, I thought they wanted to do that.
Through the chair, yes, it's. Once we probably in parallel to us providing all of the documentation they need to proceed. Um, uh conditional agreement would be uh signed at that time. For the two hundred four thousand.
Okay.
As opposed to much later with option one, which is where the normal offsite levy would be paid much later. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
So counsel, has everybody had a chance to read that section? Any discussion on this before I call that to answer?
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering why recommendations this come back regular rather than. And I guess to add to that. Without divulging anything that happened in close session, there were some other. Discussions other than contribution that could potentially be considered. I'm not sure if that's something council wants to consider, wants to direct administration to consider. Or if it would come back as options to commit to the whole.
It's not directed to C A O, to administration.
I'm assuming, I mean, it's Counselor Ragoon's motion, but it was based on recommendation administration, so. I guess I'd ask why why the recommendation was to have it come to regular instead of committee?
Sir, did you want to chime in here?
Um. Through the chair of council, we'd like to consider this. I can, I do, once again, uh we can, but I think uh. You know, really, this is for us to. Uh, proceed with negotiating with the developer and get that, get that direction from council, because that is. Uh. You know. It would just be a check, we could certainly bring a possible agreement back at that time. Uh, but I think at this time, it's uh really is a letter of inter uh. Uh, to the developer and bringing that forward to council. Council would like to consider of all the possible options. At a committee of the whole meeting, again, you certainly can, and we're not uh administrations are opposed to that, it was. Uh. Maybe just for the sake of expediencing, but we certainly can.
Counselor Stashik.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up. The only reason I ask is because. That wording is holds it exclusively to a cash financial commitment of two hundred and four thousand dollars. To me, that includes some of the other options that were discussed in the in the closed session. So council's okay with that, that's that's fine. I I just think there might be other options that could be advantageous rather than. Taking two hundred and four thousand dollars in cash in the offset levies reserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGee.
I know I was wrong, too.
Doctor Cal.
I thought when we were in camera that uh Counselor uh. Um, Kristen um explained that very well, that the. About the other option and the timing of the other option, that this seems, based on our explanation, that seemed to be. Um, appropriate, uh we can go ahead with this and uh. I I I thought you, I thought it was explained. To my satisfaction, to vote for this now.
I'm Barrett Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through the chair to administration, uh with with the wording of uh this consensus. Uh, should we end up going through with this and then further uh, you know, voting to uh support this in a a regular council meeting? Would that actually preclude us from going ahead with some of the other options? Uh, that were presented in camera today. Uh, those options. Will take longer period of time for negotiation, for for preparation if we were to choose any of those options. And my understanding of this situation is we're trying to expedite uh development by by simply. Rearranging some of the the payment processes for some of these offsite levies. Uh, they exist on this land with the hope that that can expedite some some development. Uh, if that doesn't work out, though. Uh, we could renegotiate and and go with some of the other options that were in camera, or does this preclude that? Right away? Thank you.
Mr. McDonald, please.
Uh, through the through the chair to all of committee, uh I believe those other options that were just discussed are. Separate from this ask, and if we were to pursue and come to an agreement on any of those free dear options, this would simply fall away and uh. And and would not be exercised.
Counselor Travers.
Uh, thank you through the chair. I I agree with the the. Consensus, I guess, that that's up on there right now. I believe that this is the. The motion that will get the wheels rolling. Um, to start the right conversations, to allow them to to start moving ahead, and I do believe that at a later point. Um. Uh, coming back to renegotiate or talk about those other options as completely separate items. Um, could be, could be the thing, so I I do support this as coming to council. Um. In order to expedite. Uh, this matter and certainly open, I think, though, to having other items discussed in closed session come forward at a later time to a committee meeting. But I think this is good the way it is.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, any more discussion, any more questions on this uh direction? And Counselor Taylor.
Um. We do support the direction, um. And I do think that it supports two items like in our uh recently approved tactical plan. The one about implementation of mechanisms to encourage development of uh. Uh vacant uh crown land, although if this doesn't go ahead, it will become vacant crown. Maybe just right now. The other one that it potentially is supports uh increase in availability and options for the supply of housing, because that could be that. So uh if we don't go ahead with this, we risk sterilizing more land. And uh. Um. Then uh we we'll move closer to getting uh property taxes for the development of this land sooner than get a third of our money back. And with respect to the precedent argument, uh. I think we're past that because we did approve a number of statements in the strategic plan that said this is the direction that we would like to go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And counsel, any more discussion on this direction? And hearing none, I will call it a question. But council seek consensus for administration to bring water lines and realignment request. East Ridge Village item to regular council meeting, which is a recommendation that administration is already giving. An agreement with the current landlord of two hundred written way to provide a two hundred and four thousand dollar financial commitment letter. To the cost of the lowering. To the cost of lowering the water line, subject to the town providing the payment at the time of development proceeding to each destruction. Counsel, please hold now. And that is Karen. Counsel, any more discussion before we move on to our next item? Thank you, and counsel, what I'm going to do right now is call for a um. A minute.